A bit harder and get that cup of coffee faster. We're so excited to have you this morning. I am the president of Downtown Council. My name is Gracie Semeninger. And I want to remind everyone that we are recording today's session. The recording will be available in two places. One, our YouTube channel, the Downtown Council YouTube channel, and our new Downtown Council podcast. So if you haven't already searched for the Downtown Council on your podcast provider, please do so and hit subscribe. For those of you that are new to our council, I want to give a brief overview of who we are. So Downtown Council is one of eight chamber councils. And simply put, Downtown Council cares about the future of our city. We represent Jacksonville's business community, including major corporations, growing businesses, and startups. Our goal is to connect one another so that downtown and greater Jacksonville will thrive and prosper. In a city with seven bridges, we are the eighth bridge. Our meetings offer a brave space to discuss local topics, and we look forward to different perspectives on what makes our city great and ways to make it better. We also pride ourselves on keeping you informed of local business and civic issues by bringing top-tier speakers to our meetings. Today's speaker is Kelly Rich, Executive Director of the Springfield Preservation and Revitalization Council, also known as SPAR. Kelly will be speaking on Historic Springfield, which, as you know, is just a little bit north of the urban core, and Jacksonville's Porch Fest event. Welcome, Kelly. We are so delighted to have you. In addition, we are a complete volunteer-led board. So if you're a Downtown Council Board member, will you please wave to our attendees this morning? And hopefully you have it on gallery view. We are also excited that two of our Downtown Council Board members are currently on the Chamber Leadership Trip. They are in St. Louis, and that is Ben Johnson and Laura Phillips Edgcombe. We are so excited that they come back today, and we look forward to hearing from them on their key takeaways at our next meeting. At this time, I will now recognize all new members of the Downtown Council. Katie Cox, Gator Bowl Sports, Gina Corson, Hearts for Minds, Inc., Zamira Towns, Honey's Plates, and the Juice Bar Cafe, Michael Armano, Calypso Cafe, and the team from Pope Park Mobility, including Matthew Jones, Jackie Anderson, and Harden Perry. Welcome to DTC. We are so glad you're here. We also have an incredible opportunity to highlight a local Downtown Council member, business leader, through the Small Business Leader of the Year program. And now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Jim Webb of Manifest Distilling to share more about that. Jim?
Good morning, everybody. I hope you can hear me, and I've unmuted myself. I was, well, I'm the current SBLY for the Downtown Council, a Small Business Leader of the Year. And we're going to host a small little get-together this coming Monday at 5:30 at Manifest Distilling. It's downtown. If anyone is interested in applying for the position, I can talk about it. We're going to try to make sure that Ben Johnson, who was the last year's overall winner and also from the Downtown Council, to talk about what this role is. And it's basically like networking on steroids. If you're the Downtown Council nominee, which I was, I probably met 200 people so far this year just through the program. It generates a lot of business if you can, if you like to network. And it's a fun little line in your signature file on your email. But if anyone has any questions, you can message me here, or my email is jim@manifestdistilling.com, where I hope to see some of you at the distillery on Monday. It's at 5:30. Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much, Jim. And that is Downtown Jacksonville, if you have not yet been to Manifest, which has actually just turned into a cocktail room last month. So please join us if you are interested in learning more about the Small Business Leader of the Year program. In addition, our membership chair, Brian Tuttle, did send out an email earlier this morning about the program. So just to reiterate, there are a few qualifications for you to apply. So you must be a member of the Jax Chamber and Downtown Council. You must be an owner, partner, or shareholder of at least 25% of your business. You must be active in the day-to-day management of the company, be established locally in the same business for at least three years, have demonstrated professional business acumen and leadership, and lastly, have gross revenues of $5 million or less per year for the previous three years. So if you have an interest, as Jim mentioned, we'll be doing an in-person meetup to discuss more about that program and the benefits on Monday at 5:30 PM at Manifest. If you can't make it, send me a direct message or Jim a direct message, and we'd be happy to share a nominating form with you or more information. At this time, I think I already mentioned that our program's director, Laura. Whoops. Am I still muted? Can you hear me?
You're good.
Okay, I saw it popped up just a second ago. So in addition, I think I mentioned Laura is on the Chamber Leadership Trip, who typically introduces our speakers for those of you that have been with us a long time. So I'm really excited to have our Vice President of Downtown Council, Mr. Benjamin Alcorn, introduce today's speaker. He also is on the Board of SPAR, so this is even more special for him because he has a direct connection with Kelly and with the organization. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Benjamin Alcorn to introduce today's speaker. Ben?
Thanks, Gracie. I really appreciate it. Yeah, I am super excited today. Besides being on the Downtown Council Board, I am a member of the SPAR Board as well and Springfield resident. So I am very, very near and dear friends with Kelly Rich, and we're very, very happy to have her here today. And I'm also honored to be able to fill in for Laura Edgcombe to introduce our speaker today. Kelly is the Executive Director of SPAR. She is a native of Louisiana, moved here just about four years ago to take the Executive Director Position of Springfield Preservation and Revitalization. Kelly's worked very hard in continuing SPAR's mission and increasing the impact it has on the community. She is enthusiastic. Her tenacity is helping move Springfield towards a more livable community for all, and she's looking forward to continued success in Jacksonville's original front porch neighborhood. So before I turn it over to Kelly to get started, if you do have questions, make sure you put that in the chat, and then at the end, we'll get to as many of those questions as we absolutely can. But Kelly, thank you so much for joining us. I'll let you take over from here.
Thank you so much, Ben. I apologize if I take a minute to keep sipping on my coffee. I have a tendency to just talk really fast and really enthusiastically. So I have to take breaks sometimes and remind myself to slow down. So forgive me. I really do get excited about my job and to be able to talk about Springfield. So I'm looking forward to sharing all the good news that's happening currently. So I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen real quickly, if you don't mind. Why is it not letting me? Let me try that again. There we go. Almost a year and a half of this, and I'm still struggling at times. There we go. Okay. A little introductory slide. Hey, those of you that know all the things, can I X out to where I don't get all of the Zoom of the of the people trying to get in just so it doesn't distract me? I have a little bit of ADHD. If I exited, I think, but then I think it pops back up. Anyway, no big deal. All right. Thank you all so much. First thing I want to talk about is SPAR as its organization. It is a local nonprofit. We've been here since 1974. And it was created in response to all of the demolitions and things that were kind of pretty heavy back in the 70s and were trying to protect the neighborhood. And part of it is balancing what kind of taking care of the past while also bringing it into the future. So I want to show a comparison of, why is that? Okay, there we go, of Springfield 150 years ago. This is actually the intersection of Eighth and Main, looking south. You can see the Clutho Building on the left. You can see where currently the Hyperion and 1748 is on the right. You can see the rail, the streetcar line. You can see the cars. This was, this picture's from the 30s. And then you can see a current view on the right. Springfield was the original neighborhood. We self-proclaimed the front porch neighborhood because that's part of our identity. But Springfield got a big influx of development right after the Great Fire of 1901. It was actually incorporated in 1869. We just had our sesquicentennial two years ago. But right after the Great Fire, it stopped. Luckily, we had Hogan's Creek. That was kind of a natural buffer from keeping the fire going any further north. So immediately after, there was a big, huge boom in the neighborhood that created a very large influx of not only homes and buildings, but also people. And then, as with most historic neighborhoods, it's kind of gone up and down with population, with, you know, influx of different things. It's kind of gone down, especially when there was a kind of a suburban growth in the 60s and then huge crime issues in the 70s and 80s. And so a lot of the response was to, if there was any sort of crime issue, they would demolish the building or the home. There was a lot of fires, a lot of neglect. And so thankfully, in the past, like I said, thanks to SPAR's hard work and working with the city, we were able to stop that pretty heavy demolish mentality and have been able to save some really important buildings. So a lot of people always ask, what does SPAR do? And I like to talk about, we kind of have four tiers of focus. And our first one is for our local residents as an education and a resource. So as I mentioned earlier, part of our identity of the neighborhood and personality is our porch life. And we're very well-known as residents to not just hang out in the backyard, but actually utilize our front porch. And so if you're walking along the neighborhood, more than likely, you will see someone out on the porch that will wave and introduce themselves, invite you to lunch, give you a glass of wine. And the aspects of really knowing your neighbors is very, very accurate here. I can walk along multiple blocks and know multiple people that live there. Not only the people, but usually their dogs and their kids' names, too. So we are very proud of our front porches and definitely claim to be the front porch community of Jacksonville. As with all over the city, our real estate market is hopping. People are clamoring to get into the neighborhood. It's been interesting to see, especially since COVID, the influx of new residents that have been moving into the neighborhood from, not only from all over the city, but also from out of state. So there's a lot of people that are researching, moving to Florida and moving to Jacksonville and choosing Springfield. There's been a lot of homes that have been purchased sight unseen. They're just waiting and the short term of being on the market. And it's been really interesting to see, and I think that has a lot to do with kind of our spur in population, where 10 to 20 years ago, we had a lot of either empty homes, we had a lot of vacant lots. But in the past several years, we've had new building infill, new houses being built. And then also, our historic homes are being renovated with single families moving back in. So that, and with all of the occupancy of our rentals staying pretty much at capacity, it is kind of hard to find a spot in the neighborhood to live. So we're currently working with some developers to try to find some more housing opportunities. So there are several projects in the works for some multifamily opportunities, some more apartments, some mixed use, some affordable attainable housing. Market rate is, it's a good mix. And so be on the lookout for, I would theoretically say, probably three projects to have broken ground within the next 18 months. So we're hoping to continue with that growth and to bring even more people into this one square mile. Another thing we do is we have a design review committee that works closely with our developers, our business owners, and our residents. So there is a misconception that people have to get permission from SPAR to do anything to their homes. That's not actually 100% accurate. We are a good resource and a consultant to give people kind of updates of what's allowed. But the process of the COA, which is a certificate of appropriateness, actually goes through a city department, HPC, which is a Historic Preservation Commission. And this is to kind of monitor any exterior changes. So there's no monitoring on the interior, but anything exterior is monitored and regulated through the city's HPC. And so a lot of people will come to SPAR and ask for help or guidance or, you know, support to help these things move forward. But it's a pretty easy process, especially once you do it for the first time. And if it's a pretty normal, generic request, those that have specific or kind of unique requests might have to actually go in front of the commission. But even with that, it's not a, it's not a huge ordeal. Most things are pretty well, easily processed. So and then in the meantime, we also do workshops throughout the year. We bring in HPC staff to come. This is a free resource to our residents. And actually, outside of the neighborhood, too, we've had a lot of guests. But we talk about some sort of educational option, whether it be the COA process, how to research your historic home, how to bring solar into your home, all of these initiatives that we'll bring in as a free educational resource to our residents. Another thing we do is we're constantly working on our litter problem. As with any urban neighborhood, of course, we're always kind of fighting that fight. We have monthly cleanups, and they bounce around throughout the neighborhood. We actually partner with other organizations. And these are one of those opportunities where literally you just show up. We have everything ready to go. Ben is actually one of our normal captains to help spearhead that, in addition to several of other of my board members. But we have a pretty regular, good crew that will come up and spend a couple of hours on a Saturday. They do rotate around the neighborhood. They rotate on days. But in 2020, we actually had 120 volunteers that put in over 120, 250 hours. And that was still kind of in the midst of COVID. So there was a lot of individual adopter block. There was some opportunities for just kind of continuing to keep not only our commercial corridors, but our residential areas clean, and those are continuing every month. So if you ever need a volunteer opportunity, and I know a lot of high school kids have hours, this is a perfect opportunity to come and show up. And we have the grabbers and the trash, the trash bags, and we just need your labor for a couple of hours. So but you'll see with all of those cleanups, we're actually able to get over 300 bags of trash cleaned up out of the historic district in a year. So this is welcome to have extra hands on deck. We actually have one this Saturday, so tomorrow. So if you'd like to learn more, I think it's at Liberty Park, if I'm correct. And it's from 9:00 to 11:00. Here we go. Another thing we work on is our residential revival. We have had, we have a lot of what we call longtime residents that have been here for years and years. And as with any historic home, if you've ever had anything to do with a historic property, it's hard to maintain. There's always something needing to be fixed. And the prices, obviously, are a lot more than some going and buying new. So we came up with this program several years ago to work with a local resident that might have some sort of hindrance, whether it be age-related or income-related, where we came in and sponsored a little bit of a sprucing up on the exterior. We've had usually 50 to 60 volunteers, several sponsors and donors. But kind of what we were really proud to say is that we started, you can see the house on the left, the pre and the post picture of it. We started with a $1,000 donation. And with volunteer labor and donations, we actually were able to give $15,000 worth of exterior work to that house on the left. The house on the right is our Mickey Mouse house. If you'll notice the, excuse me, the design of the porch. That is the only house south of Savannah that has that front porch design. And we worked on that in 2019 and did some exterior protection of the water damage and just to try to get, make sure there was no leakage and things like that. Did some exterior beautification. And so this is something that we try to do every year to support one of our longtime residents, just to help maintain, not only as a benefit to the resident, but also to protect our historic housing stock. These houses need to stay here for another 100 years, hopefully. We just completed our most recent residential revival. And it was on September 11th, so it was part of the day of service for 9/11. And we focused on one of our local historic alleyways, where we spent several hours and several volunteers of cleaning up one of our historic alleyways that had been unkempt and kind of had grown in. So we felt like that was a good benefit because it actually benefited about 10 different homes instead of one. So if that's something that you or your business might be interested in, we usually adopt one project a year. So we'll be looking at our next 22 project next year. The next thing we focus on is our commercial. This is not only for current investment. We're out there recruiting businesses to choose Springfield, but then we also support our current businesses. Along Main Street, if you hadn't been lately, that and Pearl. And we also have a couple of other little pockets of commercial districts. But business is good. We've had, I always say, 2017 was kind of our magic year. We had six businesses open on Main Street within six months of one another. And that huge influx of business investment and bringing new commercial, excuse me, customers into the neighborhood has just created a ripple effect. And since then, we've had over 25 new small businesses open in the historic district. And this range is from breweries, restaurants, wine bars, retail, hair salons. It's just been a really cool influx of new business, and it's nice to see the attention being put back into it because pre-Kelly, from what I've heard, about 10 years ago, there was about 18 pawn shops on Main Street. So to kind of see that transition, it's been really exciting to be a part of. So there is more commercial space if you are interested in either bringing, relocating your business or if you're doing a second location. I'll tell you, we had a Music on Main this past week, and there were no less than three potential businesses that are either about to open or thinking about opening in Springfield. And so it's nice for them to kind of come and do their research on the neighborhood and stuff. But there's still a lot of things in the pipeline that are bubbling up. One thing we're really proud of is Historic Springfield is one of the most diverse business communities in the whole city. We have several, a wide range of business owners that types different parts of the neighborhood, and it should be able to accommodate most any interest. And so we love to support these businesses. And you can see several pictures of things that you might see while you're here in the neighborhood. Our Merchants Association is actually under SPAR. It's called Samba, Springfield Area Merchants and Business Association. And this was something we absorbed about five years ago, starting with zero members. But now we stay really good at a good 70-plus. Like I said, we offer small business support. There's networking opportunities. And then we're always pushing for collaborations. Something we're really proud about is keeping it in the family. So you'll notice that 1748 Bread is in the district wine bar. Sweet Spot, who does the jams and jellies, did a collaboration beer with Hyperion several years ago. Ice Capades has adult popsicles, and they're looking to distribute in some of our local businesses. So all of this kind of cross, you know, promotion and collaboration is really important in Historic Springfield. And any opportunity where we can work together, we definitely do. I'm real proud of that with our businesses. Something that the program does, like I said, we usually stay at a pretty steady 70-plus membership, but our monthly meetings have about 20 to 25. Now, pre-COVID, we were hitting closer to 40, but we're trying to get that back up and running at a steady pace. And we usually back and forth. One month is a pretty informal networking. And then the next month, we'll bring in a small speaker, excuse me, a small business support speaker. Something that would be a benefit to our small businesses, we've brought in social media training. We've brought in diversity training, green initiatives, things like that. That would definitely be a benefit to our small businesses, and this is free to their membership. Something else we do is we have a facade grant program. So when our businesses are doing exterior renovations, we have a matching program to help. It's a pretty low-cost, high-impact program that we've done since 2017. And like I said, since then, we've just ourselves have invested over 28,000 in the commercial districts. And that's not even what the actual impact, what it actually equals. I haven't done the math on that one, but it would be way bigger. You can see a couple of pictures here. If you remember last summer, we had some problems with some of our breweries and bars having to be closed. And so something that SPAR did to help support was we did a free delivery in Springfield, beer delivery, which was kind of a neat way to support the businesses and give them the opportunity to stay open and have an outlet to get some businesses out there. This was right in the midst of our stay-at-home order. So it was an opportunity for us to help support our businesses. We also do a lot of holiday promotion to remind people to shop small for the holidays. And so we always do a gift-giving guide. And then because of our initiatives and our small business support last year, we were one of the recipients of the Community Impact Awards with the Jacksonville Business Journal. So we were really excited to be honored in that way. The third thing we do, which is pretty much, I would say, about 75% of my attention, is we're the Springfield voice to the city. And what that means is, is we are in constant conversation with every single department. I have to make a lot of friends. So that means I'm working with all the city departments, JSO, JEA, LISC, FDOT, all the acronyms. That took me a while to learn all of them. But we are the ones that are helping advocate for speed calming in the neighborhood, more artwork in the neighborhood, more trees, different, anything that needs to be fixed or improved or bettered, we're usually in the conversation and helping it move forward. You'll see, we do a lot of walkthroughs with city departments because the best way to get them is to get them in the neighborhood and put eyes on the problems. So we're constantly doing walkthroughs. You'll see our painted crosswalks. We were the first in the city. This was something that we did with traffic engineering to, was a traffic calming initiative. It was a way to slow down traffic. As with most neighborhoods, I'm sure you know, there's always a problem with speeding. We discussed with them to come in and paint those bull bouts with the striping. Previously, that was just a blank asphalt road. And so they came in with the striping to visually narrow the road, narrow the intersection. And we came back in with a local artist and added the artwork. We've already installed two, and we're looking at adding a few more in the next few months. We'll see. And then on the right, you'll see we worked with JEA. That's some of their pump station buildings in the middle of our public parks. That's in our dog park. And so we worked with them, and so the three of us coordinated some artwork in our parks. And like I said, it took a previously just plain Jane white concrete building and put some art on it. So we love to do that as much as possible. We have a lot of creatives in the neighborhood, and so we try to work with our local artists as much as possible. And lastly, something that we like to do, it's probably the most fun, is we market the neighborhood. Opportunities like this, trying to speak about Springfield, telling people all the things that are happening in the neighborhood. But most of what we do is we throw events. We were constantly doing something in the neighborhood. We have a huge throwback baseball game for the Fourth of July. We have block parties for St. Patrick's Day. We have markets. We have bike rides. I want to tell you about our bike rides. I know some of y'all have joined us. Springfield is actually the most bike-friendly neighborhood in the city. We're not the most walkable, but we are the most bikeable. And so with that, we decided to show not only our bike-friendly neighborhood aspect, but also how connected we are to all the urban core. So we do coordinated bike rides throughout the historic neighborhoods and beyond to just kind of create, like I said, to create that collaboration, to get people comfortable back on a bike, to show how easy it is to access these other areas without a car, to be less car-dependent. And when I say bike rides, this is not Spandex and 36 Miles. This is a slow roll. This is bike, you know, the cruisers. This is all ages, all skill levels, and it's a very mosey speed. So there are rides all over the urban core, and we have two more this year, and I would love to personally invite you to these. We have one in October, which is our Bike-A-Boo. It is a Halloween-themed bike ride. It is after hours. It's a Friday night, October 29th, which is the holiday weekend. And so we invite people to dress up, put lights on their bikes. We'll be chaperoned by JSO. So we'll have that kind of safety aspect of riding through the neighborhood, and we'll be able to ride through the neighborhood and see all the Halloween decorations. And we do the equivalent of that for Christmas, which is tentatively on the calendar for December 16th, I believe. But if you follow our social media, you'll be able to see that. But that one is huge. We get all, our normal rides are usually in the 50-size range, but for the holiday ones, we get several hundred that come and join us for that. And of course, I could not come and talk without talking about Porch Fest. Porch Fest is our largest fundraiser for the neighborhood, excuse me, for SPAR in the neighborhood. And what's important to say, and I was debating on sharing this because I just got this confirmed yesterday. So y'all are going to get a little preview of something. So if you haven't heard of Porch Fest, this is actually going to be the seventh Porch Fest. So if you haven't heard of Porch Fest, this is actually going to be the seventh Porch Fest. It would have been the eighth. But of course we had to cancel last year's. What's important to say is this is free and open to the public. We'll have 22 porches with performances on them all day from 12 to 8:00 PM. It is family friendly. It is dog friendly, but there's a lot of food and drinks. So there's, it's a wonderful opportunity for you to come and get eyes back on the neighborhood if you hadn't been lately. It's in the midst of our residential area. You've got the tree canopy. You've got the beautiful historic homes mixed in with the new ones. And it's a great day in the neighborhood. I do push you to go to our website if you're looking for a volunteer opportunity. We would love for you to come and help us sell beer or set up or sell t-shirts. You do get a free t-shirt if you come and volunteer, but I think the deadline for that is today. So nothing like the present. Go ahead and go to that website. You can sign up there. So this is what I'm giving you a preview of. There we go. This is our map. This is our lineup. This has not gone public yet. We will share this probably next week. But this is our footprint. I wanted you to get some understanding of, especially for our first timers that haven't been, the dynamics of Porch Fest. So you'll see, this is the east side of Main Street. We call this the Southeast quadrant. Because it's bordered by Main Street and Eighth Street. And we will actually shut these streets down throughout the day. And like I said, and you'll see the, the breakdown of the performances on the left. Those are our bands. You can see the genres and the times. And so at any given moment, there's five performances playing throughout the neighborhood. There are, like I said, there's 16 food trucks. We'll have several satellite beer stations. There'll be a lot of kind of house parties. You can kind of bounce along. And like I said, people bring their wagons and they just come and stay for the day. It is a long day, but it is a fantastic day. If you want to, we'll have, of course, we, we push people to, you know, either ride Ubers or ride in with your bikes. We have bike parking available. We have a bike valet in the Wells Fargo parking lot. But for those of you that might need to drive, people are always concerned about parking. We have a wonderful partnership with FSCJ, which is what has been used previously. And we'll have shuttles running continuously throughout the day. So you can park at FSCJ or the Pluto Park kind of area. There's some church parking lots for Bethel. And just wait for the shuttle and they'll bring you straight to the entrance of the festival, which will be Sesquipark, Sesquicentennial Park. So some of our, you'll see a mix of previous bands that are kind of our regulars that play every few years. And then we've got some new bands. One band that we were really excited to get is Edward Waters University now. They're kind of in the process of rebranding, but they're marching band. And what's exciting is when I booked them, you know, I was thinking maybe, you know, a handful. And he said, well, we have 75 in our band, so we might all be there. So that may shut down the whole neighborhood with all of them playing. And then at the end of their performance, they're actually going to parade through the neighborhood for a little bit. So that'll be quite the spectacle. And then in the evening, we have three headlining performances. So all three of these bands will be playing at the same time. We'll have two on porches and then one in Sesquicentennial Park. Black Joe Lewis is someone I'm really excited. He's one of our headliners from out of town. He's coming in from Austin. He's fantastic. I'm really excited to see him live. But you'll have plenty of time to see a little bit of him walk eastward a couple of times, a couple of blocks to see LPT. And then head up to see Mama Blue and be able to see all three of our headliners within that two hour block. And then at the end, we're telling people to go hit up our businesses because I know you're going to be riled up and ready to go. And we're shutting down at eight. So we're hoping to have a big economic boost to our small businesses. The majority of them will be staying open later that night. There'll be more things to do. So we're telling people to go hit them up and have Porch Fest after dark. What's important to know about Porch Fest is that the reason that it's free. It is a fundraiser. We have wonderful sponsors and donors that help us accommodate this. But the way that we really make money is far as the ones that are selling the beer and wine. So we try to tell people, come and buy your beverages from us, buy a t-shirt. All of these things really do help this be a profitable event for us. And then what happens is that we take some of the proceeds and put public art back into the neighborhood. And so you'll kind of see a timeline for all of the public art that's been added. You can kind of say, oh, that was paid for by 2018's Porch Fest and oh, 2016's Porch Fest paid for that. And so it's been a wonderful opportunity to have, like to have continual art added. And we call it the big cycle. So not only are we supporting our local artists in the music genre, but then we're also supporting our local artists adding more public art. And you can see all of these initiatives that have been paid for by Porch Fest funds. Those of you that kind of find that interesting and would like to see all the murals, we actually have an art tour on Visit Jack's. If you have not downloaded the Visit Jack's app, it's very informative. It's really cool to see all of the different, they can kind of help you set up several different tours. But our art tour is on there and I think we, I think we have like 16 different stops. And that includes sculptures and mosaics and murals all over the neighborhood. And it tells you exactly where to go. And there's even a little history with it. So it'll even tell you more about the background of the artwork. Couple other things I mentioned, we had Music on Main this past week. We are continuing that throughout the end of the year. The next three you'll notice are dates, if you want to add those to your calendar. These are almost like little mini Porch Fests. We get several hundred people that come. You'll see them picnicking in Sesquipark. It's a wonderful opportunity to bring your family. We have food trucks, beer and wine. And then live music. And like I said, it's free and open to the public. October 27th, we're excited to have jams come and join us. And then also John Lumpkin's Institute is going to have it. So we're going to have a full fledged jazz night. And then November 26th is going to be the day after Thanksgiving. That's going to be Danker and then it'll also be coordinated with our tree lighting ceremony. So that's when we like turn the lights on and start the holiday festivities. So that'll be a wonderful opportunity for you to come and see Sesquicentennial Park lit up. And then lastly, we're always, we're excited about December 29th to be kind of the kickoff for Gator Bowl weekend. That'll be the Wednesday night before the game, which is on Friday. And we'll have Bold City Classics, which is the new revamp of the Chris Thomas Band. So that'll be a wonderful event in the neighborhood. I'd love to have you join us there. Now, what we also remind people of is that we are a membership based organization. You do not have to live in the neighborhood to support us as an organization. And what happens is if you are a member, you get a lot of perks. I think we have over 16 businesses that, because we just had a new one add, that will give you discounts. So you get those little key tags for being a member. And when you go eat at Ola, you get a 15% off your check. Or if you're at Krispies, you get 10% off your lunch, dollar off beers, 10% off of food, whatever it may be. But if you go to our website, all of our perks are listed on there. There's some really valuable ones. So this is a wonderful collaboration between our businesses that are helping support us that ends up supporting our members as well. And lastly, people are always asking, what can we do? So when you support SPAR, you're supporting Springfield. And one thing you can do is to join our email newsletter. We send out monthly newsletters. This will include volunteer opportunities, events, new businesses, things that are happening in the neighborhood. And the way to do that is to go to our website, the top right hand corner and just plug in your email and that's it. Very easy. We will not spam you. We only send like one newsletter a month. And it's pretty informative for those that are interested with the happenings in the neighborhood. Second of all, of course, become a member, like I mentioned earlier, and that can be done on the website as well. At the very least, follow us on social media. We have a very active Facebook, Instagram and Twitter and a current TikTok account. So feel free to, to join those to keep up on what we're working on and what's happening in the neighborhood. Those of you that are pretty active on Amazon, which I'm sure most of us are, they make it way too convenient. I don't know if you know this, but you can choose a nonprofit to, for Amazon to give a percentage back to. This is not an add-on to your cost. It actually comes out of Amazon's profits. So you go to Amazon Smile and you choose an organization and you can choose SPAR to be your organization. And truthfully, those little amounts add up. We usually get about $250 quarterly from all of the people that choose Springfield, excuse me, that choose SPAR as their organization. So if you haven't done that yet, that's a really, really easy way to support us. Volunteer for a committee or an event. Like I mentioned, we're currently needing volunteers for Porch Fest. Because I don't know if you know this, but I am the only full-time employee. I have two part-time employees and everything else is run by fantastic volunteers. These are our board members. These are our committee members and these are just regular residents that want to support. So we definitely need more help on the event side. Donate to a project you know as a nonprofit will always take your money. So any sort of opportunity for a donation, $5 to anything above, it always goes back to our programming. And it helps us continue to be a support to the neighborhood. And then lastly, something else I want you to do, we are still fighting outdated perceptions of the neighborhood throughout the city. People still kind of ask me if I feel safe in the neighborhood or what's there to do or isn't that a scary place? And it's kind of like, no, it's fantastic. I walk and bike through this neighborhood all the time. And so once people get here and they put eyes on it and they see the energy and feel the, kind of feel the personality, they fall in love with it. And so I need your voice to be our walking commercial. Tell people about the fantastic lunch you got at Silky's or the great place to get, you know, the, the new district wine bar. Or the fantastic time you had at Music on Main and help us get people into the neighborhood. Not only to potentially move to the neighborhood, but also to continue to support our small businesses. And I think I'm done. Thank y'all so much for your attention and support. And I hopefully will have some interesting questions. So I'm going to unshare my screen now. So I can go back to seeing faces.
Thanks Kelly. And yes, I'm pretty used to, you do talk very fast. You covered lots of information there, but thank you so much for that. We do have a pretty good amount of questions. So I'm just going to dive right into those. The first question came from Slaton Morrow. You had mentioned the restoration workshops.
Yes.
When, when are those typically? And how do people find out when they're coming up? Is that just go to the website? Or what's the best way to know when those are happening?
Two opportunities. Usually we have two to four offered throughout the year. We do not have any more scheduled this year because there was some staff changes at HPC. And so, but I am looking for 2022. The best way is to follow us on social media. You can always go to our website. We have our events calendar that's pretty accurate and up to date. And it has all of our events planned for the year and then also our newsletter. So those would be in our monthly newsletter whenever they're coming up. So if that's something that's, and as a preview, I like to tell people, if you really just kind of want to learn more about the COA process, we actually have a webinar on our YouTube channel. So if you'll go to YouTube and search Historic Springfield Jacksonville, you should be able to find it. And there is a webinar that we recorded last year with HPC. That's kind of an overview of the COA process. So that would be a great resource for you to be able to watch on your own time.
Kelly.
Yes.
What is a COA and what is HPC?
I know, more acronyms. I'm telling you. So a COA is a certificate of appropriateness. And what that is, it means you've got permission from the city to do something to the exterior of your, of your building or home. And HPC is the City Department Historic Preservation Commission. And that's under the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yes.
Robert had asked about when the next Music on Main is. You had put up a slide. When is, when is that next one again?
October 27th. Usually the last Wednesday of the month. The only one we switch with is that November one because we do it the day after Thanksgiving.
Gotcha. This question is from, from me. In looking, I was able to look at our, our recent census information. It's pretty clear that Springfield is a great deal more diverse as a neighborhood than a lot of other neighborhoods in Jacksonville. How does SPAR support that diversity in Springfield? But also in surrounding neighborhoods like out east in the historic East Side neighborhood? Can you talk about that? And then sort of the idea, we, you know, we hear the word gentrification. But can you talk about the difference between gentrification and revitalization?
You know, it's something that as an organization is a constant topic. It's always a concern. We are in constant conversation and communication with, you mentioned our outlying neighborhoods. We try to work pretty regularly with our friends in the East Side neighborhood. We have a bike ride planned in early of the year to go to Durkville, which is our newest historic district. And it is a historically black neighborhood. And so we're excited to go learn about, more about their neighborhood and to support them as a new and growing historic neighborhood, historic district. Another thing is education. We're always trying to have, to learn more about what other cities are doing, what we can do to keep the diversity and authenticity of the neighborhood. And the census numbers really do create some new topics and, and trying to figure out the whys and the whats and what can we do's and things like that. And so in the meantime, we currently support, you know, we're, we're trying to support like our longtime residents that have been here and that have invested a long time ago. And so we're, we don't want anyone to either be displaced or feel out of touch or whatever we can do. So we try to diversify our communication methods, even though we are very social media heavy, as most of us are. We do try to at least twice a year, go out and knock on doors. We want to meet our neighbors and make sure they know what's available to them. And to keep the communication, the lines of communication open. I know that we had a resident last year that had some problems and had some electricity turned off. And so we were able to advocate on her behalf to get some temporary vouchers from JEA while she was able to get her situation worked out. We work with our local businesses and try to give them in any sort of support that they can. We definitely support our black business owners. We're, we're a proud neighborhood of, I need to do the numbers, but I'm going to tell you, the most recent business openings have all been black owned. Last year in the midst of COVID, we had three businesses open. And, and then we've got several that are in process of opening. And so it's just kind of an exciting time to see the bubbles and the changes. And gentrification is a word that is definitely thrown around and discussed. And I don't know necessarily, because you know, there's always a ripple effect of if, if there is one thing that happens, there's a cause and effect to it. And all we can do is continue to work with our local residents that have been here. We work with our city. We try to be an advocate and a support and to do our best to make sure that everyone feels welcomed and included. So I don't know if that answered your question too much, but hopefully it tells you what we're actively working with.
Sure, absolutely. You had mentioned the business community and some of the black owned businesses over on Pearl Street, just north of Eighth. I know there's several minority owned businesses that are right there. So it's not just Main Street. We do have an opening coming up on Main Street with Ready Arts moving. And then also over on the east side of our neighborhood with re-threaded moving over. What are some of the other things that are happening? I know there's talk about a food truck park on Fourth and Main. Talk about those if you could.
You know, that's a whole other discussion. We have another 30 minutes. If you knew all the businesses that are projected and planned to opening, it is a fantastic time to move to Springfield. Yes, there is a re-threaded. It has, is in the process of moving. I think they're already moved, but they may not be open to their normal, you know, facilities and stuff. They're, they're working on their campus. But they moved over this past year. Camp Craft Cocktail has bought a new building and is expanding, which is a local business. We have a food truck park that's opening next month. We have a new plant store Plantasia that's opening on East Eight. Ready Arts is moving. We have an axe throwing place that's opening. We have a new hair salon that's opened. It's been, every few days, there's usually a new announcement about to be made. And like I said, at Music on Main this past week, there were three different businesses. And all three of them, no, one was Stumpy's. One was the Axe Throwing Place. So they've made their announcement. The other two are local businesses in Jacksonville that are looking to do an additional store here. So. But they wanted to come check out the neighborhoods. I think we did okay. The Music on Main was a great event Wednesday night. So I think they fell in love with the neighborhood.
Thanks Kelly. Our good friend Bill Hoff asks, who are the major supporters of Porch Fest?
We have so many sponsors. Our fantastic sponsors, of course, we do get state money. We get local money through our city. And then we have fantastic stakeholder businesses that have supported us for years, including UF Health. The Jesse, which is formerly, you know, Jesse Dupont is now rebranded under the Jesse. We have North Florida Distributors, which is our local beer company. We have a wonderful relationship with them, of course, because we have to sell a lot of beer year round. And, oh, I'm going to cheat because look, I've got my list right here. ByStar is a fantastic partner, not only for first time Porch Fest supporter, but they were wonderful donors to our capital campaign that we just completed. We have Bread and Board, which y'all might know, that are sponsoring our VIP tent this year. Let's see, Smith Brothers, Terrawise, Petra, Sight and Sound, nine oh four. Yeah, we have some wonderful community partners that are supportive of us. So we're able to offer this free to the community.
Thanks, Kelly. I want to shift a little bit, ask a couple of questions. One from John Singleton and Casey Barnes. Is there any government or nonprofit support for residents to upgrade homes? To me, insurance requirements, whether that be wiring, plumbing, hazardous material remediation. And are there any, you know, city grants or any other grants that you know of for restoring, helping to restore a historic home?
No, I wish. Several, several years ago, there were. And then they paused it and have not reinstated it. Now, commercial properties, yes, there is some funding throughout, whether it be federal and state and city funding to help on commercial buildings. But residential, there is not currently any, there might be some random opportunities, but they're not steady and they're not easily accessible. So I wish there were. That's one reason why we were, you know, we kind of implemented residential revival. Because even though it's a very, you know, we wish we could help and support all of our residents, but there's currently not any funding for individuals in that capacity.
We're getting pretty close to the end, but we got a couple more questions, Kelly. Will the Emerald Trail, this is from Gracie, will the Emerald Trail loop impact Springfield and how so?
Get me started on the Emerald Trail. I keep telling, it is going to be transformational for the urban core, but especially for Springfield. We feel pretty confident. So it's going to connect, of course, some already existing trails. But then it's going to build some new sections that's actually going to utilize some of our historic alleyways. So it's going to bring in the Phoenix Arts District. It's going to bring in the, the two S lines. It's going to go straight through our historic park system through Pluto Park. And it's just going to create this fantastic interconnection throughout the neighborhood. And then it's just going to make us even more bikeable. So I'm really excited. They've been a wonderful partner and have been great with keeping us in the conversation. So I, I sing groundwork praises all the time.
Awesome. Thanks, Kelly. I think that gets pretty much almost all the questions. So I am going to say thank you again. What a great presentation, some great feedback in the chat. Everybody was happy that you could, could join us. I'm going to turn things back over to our fearless leader, Gracie Simmendinger. And thank you for letting me pinch hit for Laura today.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Kelly and Ben. That was awesome. I, I mentioned it in the chat earlier, but I'm not a Springfield resident, but I feel so strongly in what you are building that I myself am a, a member of Spar. So it's a great way to support an organization, even if you're not, you know, a specific resident. I love going to Springfield and going to, you know, your events. So just keep doing what you're doing. And I promote everyone to check out more on their, on their website. So we do have time for breakouts this morning. But I do want to mention that our next meeting is going to be on Zoom on Friday, October fifteenth. Speaker information, TBA. However, just mark your calendars that that's our next meeting. If you have to drop off, totally fine. But just know for the next ten or so minutes, we'll be in breakouts talking about the incredible stuff that Kelly was sharing in Springfield. So I just want to prompt the group with, before we go into breakouts and I have Kathy put us into small groups, you know, what is one project or event that Kelly mentioned that you've either attended in the past and really loved or you're looking forward to attending or being a part of? So we'll just use that as the, the general icebreaker and get to know one another and network a bit. So without further ado, I'm going to turn over to Kathy Sutton with the Jack's Chamber to put us into small groups for about ten minutes.